Okay, let's get reconvene. And we have city, we're up to the city attorney update. Ms. Shepherd?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing yet.
Okay, you can go and get ready if you like. Mr. Patch, too.
Just a couple of items. One, let me introduce Vince Sadersfeld. He's our interim planning and development director. Congratulations. His own job, but also that of the director as well as deputy director. So he's, I can pray for his well-being.
Talk to Chief O'Grady. His people know how to wear multiple hats and you can do the same. Not a problem.
Thank you, it's an honor.
At the next meeting, a couple of items on your, we have the bids we're asking council to approve related to the utility relocation on 441 between 46 and Lincoln. The good news is it came almost a million dollars, maybe a little over a million dollars under the engineer's estimate, so some good news there.
That's a good thing.
Yep, and so, but it's still pretty pricey and you're still going to be looking at also requesting approval for easements well in excess of pushing close to $900,000 associated with that project. So, but at that point in time, you know, the project will be going forward and it will be the remaining balance of the 2014 bond issue. So with that, that's pretty much all I have at this point, other than to say I appreciate keeping me on for another seven days. The tree grant, I know given the timing, I would have not got a chance to work on, but with the, with keeping me on a few days, it really helped to get that in place, so.
Well, we thank you. Thank you. Well, we thank you for, you know, hanging on until, you know, Mr. Lineback gets here tomorrow.
He starts tomorrow morning at eight, so.
Eight o'clock, and I haven't, he hasn't called me, and so I assume he's in town and ready to go to work at eight o'clock tomorrow morning, so I don't see him here in the audience either, so we'll let it go at that. City council comments, any comments from the city council?
My only comment, I want to publicly and personally thank Vince for his months here inviting this city. We were blessed with a seven to zero vote in favor of Vince. We trusted him, I trusted him. I, thank you. I take the, I make the effort at each, before each council meeting to visit with the city manager so that I don't have to waste my time and certainly the public's time asking questions that are, to which I find the answers meeting the two before when I meet with the city manager. That works well for me and I wanted to, I wanted to tell you Vince, how much I appreciate your time, your competence, your sensitivity to issues, and you have been a good guide for this city, I believe, and I believe you will be missed, and so I thank you very much for that.
May I say something?
You may.
I want to thank you so much Vincent for being the fabulous city manager. I really liked being out there with you and the town and everything, and I would like to take this opportunity for everyone to stand up and give you a round of applause for being such a fabulous man.
Thank you. I appreciate your service, which I wish, your thing has been good.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much, you're a gentleman.
I do appreciate it.
Again, we already made our thank yous before, but again, thank you publicly and for, you know, things that you've done.
Fair wins, Paul, and please.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, but we leave.
You can leave, and thank you very much again.
Yes, thank you.
Let's see here. Guess we can just stay there and we'll let the next place come in, and what we're going to do is we're going to start the, Ms. Shepherd is staying for, he's the first interviewer. We're going to go into the interviews, public interviews of the, from the RFPs that we got on the city attorney, and Chris Farm is going to be first. And after we go through the three firms that we're going to be interviewing tonight, what we will do is what we did with the interim city manager, we'll just take, put down your, I guess, the first and second choice, and then we'll look at them and we'll see how it goes from there, and then we'll, if we want to, take a look tonight on that.
I had the ranking sheets, and instead of just putting down one and two, we need to do one, two, and three because that's the way the sheets are set up, and I'll pass them out when you're ready.
Sure, okay. Okay, with that, we can do, I got a little confused last time I tried doing it, when we go back and forth, back and forth, so we'll just start, Mr. Cril, I was going to go with you, but since you just put food in your mouth, we'll get that, we'll go with Ms. Stiller.
May I ask a question before we get started? I have, if you've read my proposal, I know you have, I've also offered to you, if you want a different face, some fresh eyes, my partner Drew Smith, who you're familiar with, and so if, I don't know whether you want us to both sit in the middle so you can ask us whichever question you want, or you want to have me interview you and then that's okay, or you want to have me interview and then bring up Mr. Smith, but my point is, he's here if you want to talk to him.
Okay, it's your firm, so I'm going to let you, that's your question. So I'll tell you what, if, we did this before and we found out, if we can move this microphone over to here, Mr. Shepherd, if you wouldn't mind.
No, we're ten.
Well, that does move you over, okay, good, you didn't reach over there.
Okay.
And move it over, and if you want to sit there, that's fine, I'll sit there. All right. Try to keep this informal as we can, and to be fair to the mayor, who's being way too gracious, it wasn't him that had the problem with the order a lot of times, it was me, so I was the problem.
I was never going to say that.
Your wife probably gives you enough time already, so I'm not going to.
So, okay, in municipal law, reducing risk can often be in conflict with action or moving an issue forward. Can you tell us about a project or situation where you provided legal counsel that successfully balanced these competing factors?
Let's see, do we have a matter forward that is legally problematic but politically popular, is that essentially what you're asking me?
Right, so that, I know that, I know that we're all, you know, we want to reduce risk to the city as far as, you know, financial or judiciary risk, but that can also conflict with to get something accomplished that the city wants to accomplish.
It absolutely can, and an example that we are living through right now is with the arts ordinance, so it's a perfect opportunity to talk about it. The answer to that question is yes. As an example of something where that has happened, this is one, if you recall when the issue of the arts ordinance was raised and specifically Epic's issues with it, I suggested then, perli ordinance, that a quick solution that avoids the longer issue which we've confronted, which is how to change the ordinance and how to address it, would be posting a deposit which the applicant could get back, assuming that the ordinance was changed in a way that I admit soon that would, and if you recall, one of the things that I said is, my suggestion would be, initially this body said, let's send it to the arts commission, and I said then, and I'm grateful that you followed my advice, that the best solution would be to have us look at it, because already knew there were problems before it got to the arts commission, and they came up with a solution that was unworkable. And so that's a perfect example. The traditional approach would have been saying, well, we need to amend the ordinance, and that's going to take two readings, and, you know, we'll have the arts commission involved and all of those things, and we are still going through that process, but to provide a solution that worked immediately for the applicant is part of trying to figure out how to get you where you want to go. You going down this way, maybe?
Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Shepherd, you were, four or five years ago, you were fairly intimately involved in recovering $2.1 million from the Sullivan Ranch issue that was something along the lines of Ms. Stiller talked about, trying to balance some difficult issues and trying to avoid litigation and things like that. I'd like to have you describe for me and for the council in a paragraph what that involved and what happened.
In a paragraph, I wrote a nine, nine eight single space report, but in short sum, I found out, as did the leaders of the city, because usually I'm not the first one to know, that there had been a failure to collect water meter fees and water impact fees for both reclaimed and portable water meters, and I assume by now you guys understand what those things are. And the reason it happened, short summary, is because the developer, which was Syntex Home, later purchased by Polte, had put up a $750,000, $770,000 deposit towards the future cost of those meters and impact fees, and that was supposed to cover roughly 150 homes. What happened is, the deposit was booked as cash through the finance department right away, and as a result, it wasn't on the books on a go through as a base, as a deposit which would be checked off against. Okay, we have a deposit that was 750, it's now diminished to 720, it's now seven, based on permits being pulled and houses being built. And so without a tracking system, that credit, as the building picked up and more homes were built, quickly diminished and got to the point of an inverted triangle, and became a over $2 million debt that we had not collected, we, the city, had not collected. It was significantly even worse because of a couple of factors that are germane here. Number one is that the city had had no procedures to track, had done no tracking, and when the builder, multiple times over the course of a long set of years, came at certain times without its receipt showing that it had paid a deposit, if it's a new person of it, for example, the new person would think, oh, well, I got, I have to pay the fees, and would bring a check, and did, and because they were, certain people in certain departments were still on the assumption there was a deposit, we actually refunded them money. So it was a bad set of facts, but the worst fact is that when I started looking into it, tried to figure out what to do, is almost immediately discovered that the city had a statute of limitations problem, which meant that if that had been discovered, we would be out $2.1 million, period. And so it puts us in an unusual position, and it's kind of important to understand why that's so. Number one, one of the things that I try never to do, and I could cite examples, but won't because I don't want to get under anybody's nerves here, is not to get involved in things that involve you folks, whether it's investigations or whatever, same with employees, same thing reason, and I can explain the rationale for it because it kind of goes to the underlying philosophy of being a city attorney. If you are someone who the people, you have to advise, whether it be city staff or the elected officials, fears, you can't be effective. You need them at all levels to be able to come to you and ask questions to avoid problems and not to feel like if they tell you about a problem, you will rat them out. And so there's been multiple examples over our history or my history with the city where we've said, hey, I can't do that, you need to get someone else because it could compromise my relationship with either elected officials or staff. In this case, because of the statute of limitations problem that was there, more people knowing and being involved was not a good thing. It would have been a very, very bad thing, because it was very clear to me, not surprisingly, early on by both elected officials and staff, that the number one goal was get that money back. So I had to do something very unusual for me, and that is both try to recover the money and conduct the cause and origin investigation of how we got here, and that's one of the reasons I know so much about how we got here, because I did that too. And so to your point, the Sullivan Ranch episode, to me, is one of the things that I'm most proud of in my years with the city, and I've done a lot of stuff over 32 years, lots, but this one was a good one for the city because I didn't have to file a lawsuit. Roughly five months from the day that I learned of it, later, we had collected all of the money that we were due, and I completed the investigation and turned it back to people who needed to deal with it, that would have been the city manager and the city council. So that Sullivan Ranch thing, in a nutshell, the reason I was able to do that is that Polte was represented. Sometimes it's been good, and sometimes it's been lucky, and sometimes it's been both. The attorney for Polte had worked for me, and he knew, which anybody who has checked on my reputation will know, I will sue you and I will not quit, and he knew that I would sue them and I would not quit, and so they paid.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So, you know, you have vast experience, so just take a moment and explain some of the things that you've done in other cities that you're most proud of and just kind of open.
Okay. Well, it's a funny thing, and if you allow me to expand the question just a bit.
Yeah, please do.
Philosophically, one of the things that is unique to me about the fact that I'm sitting here in front of you or any city, is that I would have never guessed when I started practicing law that this is where I would ever end up. And while nothing's proven, and I'm not now speaking about Mount Door, but generally speaking, whether I'll change from this area of law at some point in the future, I mean, there's no guarantees because I wouldn't have predicted I ended up here 13, 14 years ago. I began my career as a complex commercial litigator, and an interesting sidebar, completely irrelevant to this, and I won't spell a lot of details, but it is true, my very first client was George Steinbrenner. And so if you start with someone who's that difficult, it just gets better from there. And so, and so, long story short, in my view, the job of city attorney for whoever does it is such a difficult job because it embraces so many disciplines, I honestly never thought I would be in that role. And how it happened that I got in that role is going to be very germane to your question of what I'm proud of. In 1998, I got contacted by an attorney who was then the city attorney for Maitland, and he'd been doing the job for a long, long time, in fact, almost 30 years, and he said he did no longer wanted to do litigation, and he knew I had done a lot and had very good results, and so he asked me to be the city's litigator, just for cases that they got involved in, and I did. And I won three or four of them, settled one, they were very happy, and when he finally said candidly, I can't take any more of these meetings, and I'm done, they asked me to put in my name and hat, and I did, and I got selected amongst, for 18 different law firms that put in. That's kind of the difference between then and now. That was at a time, FYI, for anybody who wants to know, that was prior to board certification as being an issue. So had it been a qualification, it would have been a different story, but there was no such qualification at that time for that discipline. And I got on from there and learned a whole lot since then about all of the various areas and fingers in the pie you have to put for this job. Things I'm most proud of are not losing, with one spectacular exception I'm going to tell you about, lawsuits. And why is that important? Well, it's because when you advise policymakers, as you all are, it is important to make sure that the policies that you ultimately decide on, I can protect you on and make sure they're upheld. It's a critically important function of the job that doesn't get understood at this level, at the policy level, as it should. There is a philosophy that says that the person who sits in the city attorney chair should guide you, and I couldn't disagree more with that. I am not to tell you the destination to go on, and it's not my job to do that, it is my job to keep you off the rocks. And in my definition, in my world of keeping you off the rocks, it is this, if you have an objective that you need to get to, and I know there's an iceberg down there, I'm going to try to steer you clear of it, but if you want to go to Antarctica, then I'm along for the ride, I'll see the penguins and we'll have a good time. It really is that simple, and the reason that's important is because, and one is something that Drew and I can both relate to you, is we interviewed for another city that will be nameless, but it's on the east coast, and we went through an interview that can only be described politely as ping pong, and ping pong in that there was a clear split on council, one faction which believed that the city attorney's role was in fact to be like the unelected sixth vote, okay, and the other faction that said, why would anybody do that? Nobody elected you. Well, I fall into that camp, it's not like a close call, it's not something that I ever have to worry about, it's not my job, no one has ever cast, as long as I've been a city attorney, I haven't been voted for once, except by the people who hire me. The public has no role in that, except to try to make sure that I can keep the decision-makers that they put in office in a position to not get sued and lose. So that's, that's the biggest answer, there's a lot of different things, we've been involved in some very creative issues regarding, internet gambling was an issue, you know, and so we've done that, we bet with pill mill ordinances, you know, that we, earlier tonight, did the human rights ordinance, we were one of the first firms to get involved in that, and those things are all feathers in your cap, so to speak, as a law firm, because they're, they're cutting edge, they're the kind of stuff that you go to law school to learn how to do and also stay out of court for. One of the questions I got recently in front of another city that I represent was, how many times, and this will, you will all appreciate, how many times that I had to defend an ordinance about, or successfully defended an ordinance about invocation? Well, you know, if you're here, that I recommended, as we now do, and I'm grateful that you listened because you're the only city that did, that you do a moment of silence, and the reason for that is, I know that keeps you off the rocks, you can't get sued for that. And, but my answer to the gentleman who asked me the question in the other city is, how many times, I said, my goal is to never have to defend it because it's been done correctly to start with, and that's ultimately a philosophical issue. Now to my, the worst case scenario, I'm not going to, I'm just going to own it, I'm involved in a case, still am, in Potsdam, in which the jury verdict was, with interest and all the other factors, over $30 million, still dealing with it right now. Interestingly, it's, because it's complicated, I don't go through all the details, but we've had two payout processes. The first one, we were completely vindicated on one half of the case, and I am hoping, really hoping, that we will be completely vindicated on the second half of the case here in the next several months. All the appeal has been written, we're just waiting for the court to either set an argument or give us a ruling on that issue. But it was an object lesson, and it was an object lesson for a couple of reasons, one of which is that you cannot, and this is a perfect example, tell councils what to do. In this particular case, that's exactly what happened. I told them, as did our predecessors, the things that were their options. All of these options that they had were and are legal options. They then decided the course of which way they wanted to go, and they did that, and they are, in my opinion, being wrongly sued for doing something that was legally, and so far, the appellate courts have agreed with me, and I think that will continue. But it is an object lesson, and what I'm trying to tell you about the difference between my role to tell you this is a really bad idea even though it's illegal, that it's legal, and telling you this is illegal. That's my role, at least in a public arena. Now, finally on this topic, as I expanded, went beyond what you said, but I think it's important philosophically to do, if you individually ever say to me, I want to know what you think, individually and not in public, I will tell you, but the reason I will do that only in that setting is because I know, once the public hears what I have to say, or whoever you get as a city attorney, that ties your hands. It makes it very hard to you to justify to the public, well, I don't care what the attorney says, because everybody does, whether they ought to or not, different story, but they do. Your public and the same public that I have to answer to, they care about what I say, not because it's me, but because of that position. And so if you want to know what I think about an issue, other than what's legal, the situation for that is one-on-one and private conversation, and I'll give you the benefit of all the years of experience I have, but it's not my role, and I strongly believe this, and I hope that whoever you pick believes the same thing, to tell you which way to drive the ship is to keep you off the rocks.
Thanks.
Given the cost of senior attorney services versus your paralegals and associates, how will you balance controlling the cost for the city with the quality legal advice?
Well, it's sort of an automatic with us, based on availability, based on what the task is, and there are many things that, and I'm not saying about this, about anything with regard to the people you're interviewing tonight, because I really don't know how they work internally, but, but I do know that certain firms will charge for things, we have a rate for paralegals, and both of our office assistants are paralegal qualified, they can do paralegal work, things such as prepare notices of deposition, set court hearings, Lisa Hoskins of our office, in addition to our bookkeeper does closings, orders title work, all of those things. And typically, even though we have a rate for it, we don't charge for any of that, outside of if it's a closing, there's, there's closing fees, but they're not hourly to the, to the person, and so it's kind of a built-in savings. In addition, we don't charge for routine office costs, things like postage, copy charges, facsimiles, there's all kinds of things that, when I first got into this business, and the bigger law firm, the more likely they have this, they call everything a profit center, the copy machine is a profit center, the postage meter is a profit center, everything has got a markup, it's like going down to a warehouse sale. We don't do any of that. When our hourly rate covers all of those things, the exceptions are the extraordinary ones, so if we've got to do 10 FedExes, you'll see that, if we have to travel, you know, out of town for depositions for a witness that lives in another state, those kinds of things, but routine copy charges and facsimile charges and paper, I mean, there's a gazillion things, we just, that's part of office overhead, it's included in our rate, and that's how we handle it. And so that's the best answer to your question, Mr. Drew.
Thank you very much.
What role should the contract city attorney have in policymaking?
Let me be clear, not one. If you privately ask us a question and want to know what we think based on our experience, we'll tell you. We're not trying to get you to make a mistake, but we know our role. The easiest and quickest way, I found it by accident here, but the easiest and quickest way I know to get fired is to start sticking your nose in the policy. Again, nobody voted for me, ever. All the cities I represented, all the government agencies I represented, and it's a bunch, I've never, ever, ever been voted for. It just doesn't work that way. You guys are voted for.
You're one of my favorites, and it's hard for me to even interview you, because every time I come to council, we're all being interviewed, but I'm just going to ask you a question. If council comes on a split vote, how do you advise a council that, on that way?
Okay, well, there's, there's advice that I'm going to give you in the interview that I would never give you in a public setting, and then there's how I handle it in a public setting. So the advice I give you, if you just said to me, hey, Cliff, this gig is over for you, but how do we deal with these splits? What do we do? Well, the first thing I'm going to tell you is the same thing your mom would have told you, be nice to one another. I mean, it was said something earlier today, agree, disagree without being disagreeable. But in terms of how you make a decision, the only other one, and again, it's in this context of this interview that I'm chairing with you, I'll tell you how I deal with it from that chair in just a second, I also tell you, you need to be able to respect, and it's hard, particularly when everybody's got views, everybody believes strongly in what those views are, but you have to be able to do this, accept the decision and move on, and it's the best advice I can give you, and it's the only advice I know that works, and it's the process we're in. If you don't like the results, that's what elections are for, and again, I stay out of those too. Now, from this chair, what I do when I've got a split council is I try to make sure that whatever my advice is, is based on just what I've already said. Is the measure legal, and it don't matter which way you vote. An example where that had, where that happened in one of my cities, Maitland, relatively recently, where things were going south, is that I had more of council, it's a five member as opposed to a seven member, that didn't want a specific development that was all residential in an area very close to the downtown core of the city. The difficulty was, that was one of those quasi judicial decisions, and you've heard me speak of, where you have to base it on competent substantial evidence. And so knowing that this council was about to make a decision, probably three, two against the project, I simply did that, what I can, that I can do without throwing stones, which is, whatever decision you make, could you please tell me what the evidence is that you're basing it on so that I can make sure I can defend it? Well, that caused the council to then reflect, okay, whatever, I know I don't like it, but I've heard any evidence that it doesn't meet the code. And when there was a deafening silence on that subject, the vote turned to a 5-0 the other way. So it's, it's just one of a number of different devices, but those devices are not designed to break ties or to break split votes, they are designed to make sure that decision that's made, I can defend whichever one it is. The good news is, when you're acting in a legislative capacity as opposed to quasi judicial, I can defend almost anything, but on quasi judicial decisions, ones like rezonings and comp plan, well, not comp plans, but rezonings. complies, but rezonings and, uh, variances and that sort of stuff, you have to base it on evidence. It can't be because, hey, I, I like this guy, I met him at lawn bowling, or, um, you know, this is a neighbor friend of mine. You have to literally say, this is what the code says, this is what I've heard in testimony, and this is what the decision needs to be. You're acting as a judge, that's what quasi judicial means, so there's your answer.
Just a second, Gwen, is the sound off out there?
Okay, Mr. Shepherd, I have one for you here. Could you tell us about a situation when you've spent a lot of time working with a city council on an issue or, or a project, only to find out that the council disagrees with your opinion? How do you present your ideas? How did you present your ideas and what was the outcome? Not that that never happened here.
Never happens. They always agree with me. Um, no, the, the reality is, and I actually, uh, was discussing this with Drew earlier today, what happens when we propose ordinances, um, because, and some of the ones I've mentioned are controversial, and they're construct in terms of what they're trying to, and one of the ones that comes to mind, I've already mentioned, is this whole issue of, of invocations, opening prayers, or moments of silence, or just straight to a pledge of allegiance and that sort of thing. And, um, I, I came, as I did here, to a popka, and this was in the news, so I'm not telling saints tales out of school, and said to them, this is something that I believe strongly you should do. Uh, I will defend whatever policy you adopt, but I think if you want to avoid having to defend it and paying me a lot of money, then the good news for you is you should do this. And, and that body, and that specific group felt like, and these are the words that were used by the mayor with essentially agreement all around, that an opening prayer is a quote, a popka thing. Well, I get that, I, I respect that, and they are free to do it, but within the dictates of the Supreme Court.
Wait one second. Ma'am, ask, um, you're, are you with one of the firms here tonight?
I am.
Okay, would you, would you please, uh, over to the other, uh, there's room on the other side over there?
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can't see her, but we're good to go.
Yeah, I apologize.
No problem. In that context, uh, the Supreme Court, as I'd said to you all, or your predecessors, um, has told us the parameters under which an opening invocation can be done. And it involves allowing things that a popka, I'm confident, will hate if they are ever confronted with them. But what, what the situation is now, to your point, is they've adopted this policy that provides for the opening invocation, uh, provides a, a list for local groups to, to follow up, and so far, only one time has these, I think they're called the American Humanist or the Secular Humanist or something, can, and given a, and given a non-religious type invocation. Uh, but if you follow the Lake County news, you know, that a, a guy, I forget his name, he was a Satan worshiper or something, he came and he was gonna make a big hullabaloo, and the Lake County Commissioner said, we're gonna defend it and take it to court and all that stuff. Now, you know, when you are a lawyer and you hear, take it to court, your eyes light up, but the reality is, that's not what I'm here for. And so to your point, in a popka, I told them, this is what I think you should do. They decided to go another way. I said, okay, let's try to make it the best that we can make it, and we did.
Thanks.
Um, what do you believe are the most important attributes of a successful negotiation, and can you provide an example?
Well, there's, there's really two answers to this question, and they're both correct. And how can that be? Well, it's one, number one, I'm a lawyer, so I get to do that. Um, but the second is, because I'm not, I wear not only the hat of a lawyer, I'm also a certified mediator at both the appellate and circuit court levels. And so, uh, when you are a mediator, as I am, I frequently have said, and therefore will not deny, that the best evidence that you've had a good negotiation with those people walk away unhappy. Um, and that means they've both given up things that they didn't want to in order to reach a compromise and make the, take the matter out of the hands of the courts, and out of the hands, frankly, of their own lawyers, and taking control of the matter themselves. And so, um, the mediator hat, which I wear from time to time, um, says that the best answer to your question is, if both sides are unhappy, you're doing something right. But there's also the lawyer side. And so when you're working on behalf of a client, then your hat is a different one, and your message is a different one. The answer is to get as much as you can, uh, intelligently for the client while accomplishing the client's goals and recognizing, and this is really important, it ain't your case. And I, I, I don't apologize for the bad grammar, because it's meant for a point. And the point is, it's, it is, my opinion, to your point about a successful negotiator, is that I have seen it as a mediator, that's why I know it happens, and not just in the cases that I'm involved in as a lawyer. Lawyers get to the point sometimes where they fall in love with their cases instead of their clients. And they are so convinced that they will win, and they're so convinced that the, they're the rightness of their cause, that they forget that at the end of the day, that it is not them that are paying the bill or having to live with consequences of what happens if they are wrong. And so, um, the answer to the question, if you're the lawyer, is the best negotiating technique is to use your listening ears, as your teacher used to say, and make sure that your desire to win, your advocacy and all of those things that make you a litigator, if you are one, as I am, don't get in the way of your good judgment and making sure that your client keeps control of your client's case.
You're the, your firm is the only firm that doesn't use of counsel to essentially qualify, because you have board certified attorneys in your firm, lots of them, none of them. Um, there's been some discussion in the past about what of counsel means. And as an attorney, uh, you can tell me what it is, I believe I know what it is, but tell us what it is and what its uses are.
Uh, the standard definition that you would find is that it is a lawyer, uh, male or female, doesn't matter, um, who is not a partner or a shareholder in a firm, and the difference is basically the corporate structure of the firm, uh, but is under contract of some sort with the firm to provide services to that lawyer's clients and clients of the firm. Uh, the relationship has, though, evolved to mean different things in different contexts. And so, while I give you what is an absolutely accurate general definition, to know what it means in a specific circumstance, you'd need to know more about the relationship. So for example, an of counsel can mean simply that we are giving you a title and giving you a spot on our letterhead in return for which you're paying a third of the rent or whatever the amount of the rent and you're, and part of our overhead expenses, and you take home whatever you bring in, and otherwise, we don't have any association except to share costs. So it can mean that. Um, it can also mean that you are someone who is not, or does not want to be on the partnership or shareholder track, uh, but you're also not such, um, a weight to the firm that they want you to leave either. You have some, uh, shall we say, redeeming qualities, uh, abilities, knowledge, maybe some clients and things that would be helpful to the firm as a whole, um, but you may not want the liability of signing onto a lease, or you may not want to sign on the credit line, or you might not want any of those headaches. And so they're not gonna let you share in the profits of the firm in the same way you would as a shareholder, but they are also not gonna show you the door. So it can mean that. Uh, it's used frequently now for retired judges. They wanna go back into law practice, but they really don't wanna be there and put in the kind of work it takes to run a firm, um, and the firm wants them there because they're a retired judge, and it gives cachet to the firm. So it can mean a lot of different things, but generally, it means you're a contract lawyer with that firm.
Thank you. During the interview process, sometimes you leave afterward and you say, dang, I wish they had asked me about that, or, um, wish I could've slid some comment about this. So let's just say you're at that point.
Okay.
Just anything, you know, the question that, you know, like, may, I hope I get a chance to talk about this.
Well, yeah, I, you know, it's funny, sometimes the best way to deal with the elephant in the room is to deal with the elephant in the room. Um, do I wish I weren't having to interview for my job? Yeah. Do I think it's unjustified under all the circumstances, at least in terms of what my performance has been? Yeah, I do. Do I think it's your absolute right to do it? Yeah. Could I argue with anyone who says it's a good idea to do it in a, in a common, in a, in a, uh, routine basis? I couldn't, because had that not happened, I wouldn't be here. Well, I wouldn't be here someplace, I would've been here because y'all didn't have an attorney when I took the job. Um, but certainly, it would've been true of other cases where I've gone in and interviewed and gotten the job. Um, but I do think it's important for me to explain, again, why I think that the job of city attorney, whoever it is, is different than that of city manager, it's different than that of, of, of many jobs within the city, and it's for this reason. This is just a fundamental thing about which I feel very strongly, and if you disagree with me, you're free to, and you should definitely not pick me if you do. And that is institutional knowledge. That is one of the reasons why, to me, being a city attorney is something more than, um, something that should be rotated around every three or four years, or five years, or six years, or seven years, and here's why it's important. If you do not, first of all, institutional knowledge is more than knowing, uh, what the ordinance says, or did say, or what the charter requires or didn't require. It's also knowing why the decisions that have been made in the past were made, because you actually saw them and you lived it, and you can explain, hey, let me tell you why they did that. Let me explain how it is we got here. Now, I'm not telling you don't change direction, but what do they say about the people who don't know history, they're doomed to repeat it? And so, that's where institutional knowledge is important. Why does that not apply with city managers as much? Here's why. Because city managers do direct policy. City managers do influence who gets hired as personnel. City managers do a whole lot of other things that, that fundamentally shape the way the city is and can. And so, if a city has a, a, a manager who's very competent in his job, but is sort of more of a hands-off, laid-back approach, kind of, as long as I don't get in my, get in trouble, uh, I'm gonna be having a good job for a long time, life is good, make the politicians happy, you, you have a very stable situation, but not much gets done. If you have, on the other hand, a very active city manager who's pro-development or anti-development, who's pro-environment or anti, or whatever the case may be, that can be a huge reason that even if their performance is good, you say, hey, this ain't working for me. None of that is true about a city attorney if they do the job the way they're supposed to do the job. It's just not true. That's not your role. And so, but what is your role in terms of being able to defend the city and guide the leaders in terms of how they got to where they got to, is to know that history. And is it impossible to do it without knowing it? Of course it's not. But it would be insane to think it's not helpful. In every place I have been, and every place I am, I've replaced people who were there much longer than ten years. Except Popka, the guy was there for two weeks, but that's a scandal story.
Behind him was thirty.
Yes, exactly. And, 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 and that's the reason. So the idea that's been floated out there, without attempting to step on any toes, that this is a good idea and everybody does it, is simply false. It's not true. And that's why it's not true. Now, there's reasons to get rid of a lawyer, and there may be some reasons to get rid of me. I'm not even telling you that, but what I am telling you is, it's not because they've been there too long unless they're doing something wrong. Because they are the one party, male or female, that you can go to, who is not gonna make the policy, not gonna cast a vote, not gonna hire anybody, is gonna try to keep you from getting sued, who can tell you why something happened the way it happened when it happened. And that's why that's important.
Good, thanks.
Cliff, how are you gonna keep the, keep city clients informed about the new laws, court decisions, et cetera, things like that?
Um, we all, if you make it a firm function, we go to FMAA, which is a Florida Municipal Attorneys Association Conference every year. And, uh, when we do that, we are treated to three lovingly long days of, of CLE, just devoted to this whole practice of being a lawyer.
Continuing legal education.
Continuing, yes, excuse me, continuing legal education. Um, those, those seminars cover everything from, uh, updates on constitutional law, criminal practice and procedures, involves advising your police, because there's so much of the job that I do, you guys have, and this is not an offense meant to offend, you have no clue, because it's way broader than what you see here. It can be the police calling me about a search warrant. One of the things that happened in this city is I got a call on a Friday night, late at night, because one of your police officers had run over and killed, uh, in a, a dark night, a person who was literally standing in the middle of the road that was not lit. What do we do? We've killed this man, what, we have video, what do we do? This would never occur to most council members, that this is an issue, but it's an issue, and I get those kind of calls all the time. Um, and whether it's on police stuff, or fire stuff, or planning stuff, or personnel stuff, or whatever, this part of the job is so much smaller than the actual job. And it's one of the reasons, I said earlier on, I never expected to be here, because I didn't frankly thought, think that I would ever get to the point of knowing enough to do the job well. And, you know, my dad had a line, he said, excuse me, son, the reason they call it the practice of law is because nobody's any good at it. And so, the, the real answer to the question is, I am practicing to be better, but I want you to understand that I do think I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
How would you deal with a staff or elected leader's request that is politically motivated?
Uh, this is absolutely the honest answer to that. I have trouble discerning when they're not politically motivated. And, and the reason I say that is because you were elected for something. I don't know what the specific thing was, because I stay out of the campaign, so I don't know exactly what you ran on, or you ran on, or you ran on, but I know you were elected to do something. So my working assumption is, everything has got a political motivation, and I don't even need to know what it is. What I need to know is, it's illegal. And will it get you in trouble if you do it? And if you still wanna do it, how do we do it without getting in trouble or minimizing your risk? And it's that simple. So it doesn't matter to me that it's politically motivated, because I'd be shocked if it weren't.
Hey, we have one more question. After one more question.
Okay, um, I'm kind of elaborating on Mr. Rolson's question of, of counsel. Can you explain to me, um, the pros of being, you know, a partner of a firm compared to a counsel, and how your firm has other attorneys that can fill in if you're gone?
Sure. Well, uh, having other attorneys is a fact, function of having, being the boss. Drew and I enjoy that status with our firm, and so we can send people when we can't make it. Uh, but one of the critical things about sending somebody is that you wanna have, not have a drop-off in skills or qualifications. Now, you're gonna have a drop-off in experience, because I've been doing it thirty-plus years, and others haven't. Drew's been doing it a dozen years or so, anyway.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, well, okay, thirteen. And so, um, you know, you, you have that, you, you have a life experience as well. But I can tell you that the difference in, in our situation is that as the bosses, we do get to send people. If I can't be here, as for example, I couldn't be when y'all did these, the interim managers, I was able to say to my associate, guess who you went tomorrow? And, uh, and she willingly went. And so, that's the answer to that question, whereas when you are in an of counsel relationship or if you're in an associate relationship, you can't order anybody around. It's, it's good to be king.
On the other part, the question about the, of counsel, you know, the pros, cons of that and of being the boss.
Yeah, well, look, I guess, more so in terms of what it means philosophically, and so, without trying to get too rigged out on you, from your standpoint, from where you sit, what matters is, who comes to do the work, and do they do a good job, and are you proud to have them sitting there? But from my standpoint, as someone who's running a law firm, it makes a difference because of the philosophy that we carry within the firm. No one has asked me this question, and frankly, it, it doesn't, doesn't bother me, but, but a reasonable question is, well, wait a minute, you got five lawyers, four of them are board certified, why? Well, the answer is because we require it. And the reason we require it is because we know, and we want you all to know, it's the highest qualification you can get to practice law in whatever discipline. There is no higher. There's not any other place to go, there's no step, there's no higher rating, that's it. And so, we tell the people that we hire, our expectation is, if you want to be a shareholder in our law firm, you must first achieve being board certified in a discipline that we want to do. It doesn't necessarily have to be city, county, and local government, although in our cases, with all four of them that are, it is, because we do so much of it. But you need to get to the point where you can call yourself the highest skilled area that, uh, lawyer in whatever your chosen discipline that the bar provides. And so, it's a, by being the boss, or being a shareholder in a firm, as Drew and I are, we can dictate, dictate that to the people that work for us, and we, it also allows us to set a tone about what's expected ethically, morally. Um, we, we get to impart to them how to handle situations. They don't get to run around and be autonomous. They don't get to run around and be autonomous without having had first a good dose of, this is what Drew and Cliff think is the way it ought to be. And that's important, because if they don't do it that way, they don't last. It's pretty simple. So, that's the, y'all don't see that, but from our perspective, that's the answer.
Okay. We're getting really close to the end, so I'm just gonna, instead of going to some more questions, and Mike gets some long answers, and keep the thing moving. Tonight, I'm going to thank you for your time--
Okay.
--and you and Drew both being here, and taking the time, and, well, you were going here anyway, but anyway, thank you for the time. And Drew, well, thank you for taking your time to be here.
Do you want us to stick around? Do you want him? I'm happy to stay. I don't know when I'm supposed to stay, or go--
No, you're--
No.
No, you don't need to.
You're not gonna hold against me?
No, no, I'm against you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, like we did before, let's just take a couple-minute break.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I need one, put all this coffee.
I need to introduce myself for a second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're sorry if you're here late.
Sorry, it's all right.
Okay, I already extended the apologies before, but unfortunately, and you guys probably already have to deal with that on occasion, I'm sure.
Every now and then.
That's good. Okay, real quick, introduce yourself, if you would, please.
I'm Bill Colbert.
I'm Lonnie Groot.
Okay, and that's the firm of--
Stenstrom, Macintosh, Colbert, and Wiggum. We're from Lake Mary, Florida. We're about twenty-two miles.
Just make sure you're on.
Hey, we're doing interviews, we're asking questions on down the line. We left off with Mrs. Rich a little while ago, so Mr. Krill will be first, and then we'll go back around again. We're gonna have roughly around forty minutes or so--
Okay.
--for the questioning, so we can maybe get this, you know, other people come in also.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Mr. Krill?
Thanks for being here tonight. Gentlemen, we appreciate it. Could you tell us about a situation when you've spent a lot of time working with the city council on an issue or a project, only to find out that the council has disagreed with your solution or your opinion? How did you present your ideas, and what was the outcome?
Fair question. The council does not always take legal advice. The attorney's job, I've done this forty-five years, started in nineteen seventy-one. We consider ourselves attorneys and counselors, that's on our stationery. Part of what we do is take our job as counselors seriously, but we do not consider ourselves to be elected officials. We're not the eighth man on the commission. We give advice, and we give the best advice we can. It's not political advice, it's legal advice. And if the council doesn't take it, that's certainly the council's right, and we accept that, and we try to help them do whatever it is that they choose to do. Thanks. Yes, sir.
Who's found?
Oh, we're gonna do this--
Coming back.
Yeah, let's keep going that same direction.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Laurie Tillot, and thank you all for coming. In municipal-- Excuse me, let's put this on here. In municipal law, reducing risk can often be in conflict with moving an issue forward or getting where you want to go. Can you tell us about a project or a situation where you provided legal counsel that successfully balanced these competing factors?
Lonnie, you wanna take one?
Well, I've participated in many ordinance development, many contract development, and every project that you're on, you have to weigh the risk versus the benefit. Every project. And I just don't think that there's a real answer to your question, quite frankly, because you just have to take every situation and determine what the object, what the goal of the client is. And once you see the goal of the client, and you evaluate whether it's a legal goal, then you determine, you know, what the positives results could be, and what the negative results could be. And you leave it to the policymakers to decide, as long as they're advised of those positives and negatives, to make that decision. And as long as you've given your honest judgment about what risks are inherent, and a lot of times, people don't like to hear risk, as long as you've provided your honest judgment and your honest recommendation, it's up to the policymaker to make the ultimate decision.
Good evening.
Hello. Sorry, my name is Cal Rolson. This is addressed to you, Mr. Groot.
Yes, sir.
You're the one that's shown as board certified--
Yes, sir.
--and has essentially qualified the firm because you're board certified. On your resume, you show formally working for the Stensrud Law Firm for four, five or so, ending in November, and of two thousand and six, and then you had three years when, or less than three years, when you had three different employment situations, and then you were back in the Stensrud Firm in two thousand and eight. So, my question is, what prompted the changes to leave the Stensrud Firm, then go back in that three-year period? That's a good question. During the time I was with the Stensrud Firm in two thousand, when I left Seton Bow and till about two thousand and six, you probably have the dates better than I do, one of my major clients was the city of Palm Coast. There was a person who was city manager there, but I had a great deal of respect for it, and still do, Dick Kelton, who had basically built the city as the first city manager, and the city was built from scratch by Dick Kelton. And Dick wanted to have an in-house city attorney. And I spent a lot of time at Palm Coast, and spent a lot of time with Dick Kelton, and ultimately, Dick convinced me to go in-house. And I made that decision, and it was a good decision, quite frankly, and I saved the city a lot of money. I worked like a dog while I was there, enjoyed it a great deal. But what happened next was, and it was very fortuitous, that relationship ended at the same time I needed to go to Tallahassee and take care of my father, who was having health issues, and my mother had passed, and the like. And while my wife, quite frankly, was the caretaker of, the mayor's, the major caretaker, and I was the father to my father, basically-- Sure. --and God bless him, because he's, he was a great man, retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, taught high school for twenty-seven years, but he was having dementia, dementia, and the like. So, anyway, we were there until he ended up having to go into full-time care, and then I returned back to Stenstrom from Tallahassee. And I don't think it was a third, it was this Palm Coast, and then-- Well-- --Williams. Just what I have on your resume, from December first of two thousand and six till February two thousand and eight, you were city attorney for Palm Coast, a little less than two years. And then, for half a year, you were council, it says of council of law firm of Williams, Wilson, and Sexton. And then, for just a very short period of time, you were self-employed. Right, I covered the gap between leaving Tallahassee and coming back to Stenstrom. There was a gap, I just, I wasn't with the firm, but we were moving, and I was an expert witness for a land use case-- I see. --so I just accounted for that time. Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, we're here tonight, thank you for coming. The reason is that we wanted to put our legal services out for bid. So, we've got an attorney now, firm, that's been with us for about ten years, so I just wanted you to comment, one way or the other, or maybe both sides, is, why would these folks be so serious to put it out for bid, or, boy, they're the smartest people on earth? You know, comment on that. As attorneys, you know, advice, smart, dumb, you can just let it out.
Well, I won't say that, I won't try to pass judgment on this council, whether you're smart or dumb. What I will say--
It's my rule.
--that we've been representing cities for forty-five years. I started with the Stenstrom Firm February of nineteen seventy-one. The second week of February nineteen seventy-one, I went to the city of Oviedo as assistant city attorney. We still represent Oviedo. We represent the city of Sanford, and we've done that since nineteen eighty-one. So, some of our clients are longstanding clients. We have represented, in my tenure, those forty-five years, thirteen cities as city attorney. Some of them last eighteen months or so, some of them last forty-five years. The reason that cities select different attorneys at different times, many times, is because the faces on the council change, and people want to go in a different direction, which they certainly have the opportunity to do. We've, I think, got a good relationship with every city that we've represented. We've never been asked to leave a city because of representation. It's generally because a change of faces on the council, and the council wants to get a fresh set of eyes to look at something, or they want to approach things in a different way, or perhaps something has happened that they disagreed with. But those are decisions the council makes, and not the decision the attorney makes. Is that helpful to you?
Yeah.
All right, sir.
Yeah, kinda give you a little, maybe a, kind of a two-parter here, and I'm gonna be asking this of your firm and the next firm, and the question I'm gonna ask is, if we don't continue with Mr. Shepherd's services, okay, and your firm comes on board, how are you going to go about that transition period in a smooth, quick process? Because I'm sure, you know, he's, I'm not sure, I know he's working on different things now, that needs to be transferred--
Yes, sir.
--or whatever, to your firm. How do you go about doing that? And then, just secondly, with that, you know, given the cost of, you know, senior attorney services and paralegals, forces of paralegals and associates, how do you balance controlling those costs with the city, you know, given your legal advice?
The way that we represent cities, we have a, what we call a blended rate. We have a rate of a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour. And we don't charge extra for legal assistance, we don't charge extra for the senior attorney, or a lesser rate, or somebody that's not a senior attorney. I have forty-five years' experience, Mr. Groot has thirty, Mrs. Cockcroft, who signed the application with us, has sixteen years. We would all, no matter who worked on it, receive the same rate of pay. It's not just the three of us that are in the firm, we have eight attorneys, I'm the managing partner. We don't just represent cities, we have other clients as well. We have a real estate division, a state planning division, and that type of thing, business division. Other attorneys in our firm also have legal experience with cities. We have an attorney who has sixteen years of state and county representation, about ten years as a judge. He would handle for us, and does handle litigation in our firm. So, it's not just the three names that are on the application. Before we even applied, we reviewed our workload, we reviewed what nights the city council meets. We do not currently have any city council that meets on the same night that you do for regular meetings. So, there's no conflict on our schedule, as far as that goes. If we were selected, we would contact Mr. Shepherd and ask to meet with him, and to go over pending matters, and we've had a relationship with him in the past. We respect him as an attorney. I believe he respects us. And I wouldn't expect that there would be any friction between the two firms, as he phased out and we phased in. And I believe we have the education, training, and experience to be able to pick up and go forward, without the city being either penalized because we can't keep up, or penalized because we have to learn something new. We're already doing the type of work that you folks do. As part of our diligence, and I don't mean to just ramble on, as part of our diligence, we expected that you would vet us, we also vetted you. I've looked at the charter, I have reviewed minutes of the last three or four years of meetings in summary fashion, I've looked at your budget, I've looked at your debt structure, I've looked at your primary issues, I could discuss some of those with you if you chose. But I don't see anything in there that we haven't dealt with, or are not dealing with even now. So, I don't expect any problems in that regard.
Okay. Appreciate that, thank you.
Welcome to Mount Oris.
Yes, sir.
Please provide us a brief overview of your experience dealing with CRAs.
Okay. The city of Sanford has a CRA. It actually participates in three. We have in Sanford what's called the downtown historic CRA. Seminole County is a charter county. That means, when the city wanted to create a CRA, it had to have the county's concurrence and approval. I took that to the county, and they said, what's a CRA? We helped draft it. The CRA in the downtown Sanford area was just extended for an additional ten years to help fund some more of the streetscape projects. Another CRA that affects Sanford is the seventeen ninety-two CRA, which is a joint venture between the city of Sanford, the city of Lake Mary, Longwood, and Castleberry, and Seminole County. The purpose of that CRA was to make Highway seventeen ninety-two, which some people called the Main Street through Seminole County, to make it more unified and a better representation of the county and the cities that it affects. If you've been to the Seminole Town Center Mall, which is by I-4, that was done in the late nineteen eighties. We were city attorneys at that time for Sanford, and still are. In, at that time, there were sixty-nine or seventy malls on the drawing boards for the United States. A recession came along, not the Great Recession that we've just been through, but a recession that stopped all but three of those malls. There were three malls built, the Mall of the Americas, which is the biggest mall in America--
Any of us?
--the Mall in New York City on the harbor, and Seminole Town Center. Why was Seminole Town Center built? Because the city of Sanford developed a CRA right around the footprint of that cow pasture, where the mall was gonna be built, and provided for tax increment financing for the off-site improvements. And that was enough, the mall, to go ahead and be built.
Real quickly, while Mr. Colbert was working on the CRA from the city's perspective, I was working with Seminole County, and we were fighting the city like crazy on annexations and the like, and then I drafted the resolutions that delegated authority--
I was working with Seminole County, we were fighting the city like crazy on annexations and the like. And then I drafted the resolutions that delegated authority for the city to have the CRA. At Palm Coast, we started a CRA, the State Road One Hundred CRA. And that has been successful in a lot of land acquisition or anything. And as you've seen, the town center developed along State Road One Hundred, that was the ultimate vision there. And the city of Oviedo has started its CRA, which I also drafted ordinances and all that. Unfortunately, the CRA in Oviedo started just when the bubble burst. And so this was the first year since the CRA's been created that it actually had a tax increment bit of revenue to spend. And it's not that much, about a quarter million dollars. And, but it took several years to get to that point, it's just been a CRA in name only. So we're very experienced with CRAs.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, gentlemen, my name's Marie Regge, and you're from my neck of the woods. Actually, I was born in Orlando, raised in Altamont Springs. And I was there when the Altamont Mall was a cow pasture. And truly later was just beginning, my opa and I built their first house there, they came down Florida. How would you compare Seminole County, Altolite County, in the fact of legal, how you would handle the councils? I know we're so different, so how would you kind of handle the different? I'm sure our structure is different than theirs, and how is that different? Like, how many councils on the ones that you're at now?
Fair question. We represent two cities right now in Seminole County, Oviedo and Sanford. They have five-person councils. They're both city manager forms of government with councils and a mayor. The city of Daytona Beach Shores that we represent is in Volusia County. They are different than the cities in Seminole County. They have a five-person council and a city manager form of government. We have the pleasure of representing the city of Webster in Sumter County.
Oh, I know where that is, yeah.
Webster is less than a thousand people. Webster has had and still has, right now, a mayor form of government. We've been representing them three years. And when we began representing them, it was at the request of the League of Cities because they had some issues. And as we looked at the city of Webster, we recommended that their charter be changed because their charter was created in nineteen fifty-seven. It was not current. It still provided for separation of the races, for example. It did not recognize home rule. It had obsolete provisions in it. And we worked with the mayor and we appeared before the Lake Sumter Legislative Delegation. And we asked them to sponsor in the legislature an update of the charter. We made the last presentation in December. Last Wednesday, the new charter for the city of Webster passed the House and the Senate unanimously. Unanimously, now, how do you do that in twenty sixteen? Every member of the Senate and the House of Representatives voted for it. The city of Webster will now have a city manager form of government. The fact that you have seven council members and not five is not an issue. It's still a city manager and a council. The fact that you have four district commissioners and three people at large, including the mayor, is not an issue. The city of Sanford has four district commissioners and a mayor at large. The fact that you have elections for two-year terms is a blessing and a curse. It's the good news and the bad news. The blessing is you're answerable to the people. The curse, or the bad news, is every year is an election year. The city of Oviedo has two-year terms as well. So other than two extra people being on the council, there's no real difference from a legal perspective.
Can I jump in there real quick? First of all, we did something very similar for Lake Helen. Lake Helen had a nineteen fifty-five charter that if you compared the way the city operated to its charter, they didn't bear any resemblance. So we went to the legislature then too and got them a totally new charter without referendum, just had the legislature pass it. But you asked a really interesting question, which I teach adjunct sometimes at different universities. And one of the stories I tell is I think one week, when we had a lot more cities than we do right now, but we have a lot of cities, I think I spent one night each week or an afternoon and an evening with five different councils or commissions from five different cities. And what was interesting, what I tell my students is, by and large during that period of time, they were dealing with the same issues. But each council had its own perspective, had its own dynamics, had its own energy, dressed differently. In Lake Helen, if you wore a tie, you were committing a sacrilege. In Palm Coast, if you didn't wear a suit and tie, you were being rude. But all those bodies and all those different personalities and with the same issues came to their own right decisions. Nothing was illegal, nothing was unlawful, nothing was unethical. They may have been different, they may have come to different conclusions in different ways, but they all governed alike. I think that's a great thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Colbert, I had a good question for you, but you said something that sparked a different question.
I have it.
That's okay. You mentioned that you'd studied up a little bit on some of the primary issues that the city of Mount Dora is facing or going to be facing. Could you tell us what your thoughts are on some of those?
All right, sir, I'll be glad to. I didn't know if we were going to answer questions or if we were going to make a presentation or we were gonna do a combination, so I did a little bit of studying.
I guess it's a combination.
And that's fine, that's perfect. When I was doing the due diligence, one, I wanted to know whether I felt we could help you or not. And two, I wanted to try to figure out as best I could if there were issues that would somehow divide us or keep us from being able to work with you folks. And the good news is, I didn't find any or we wouldn't be here. As I looked, I saw similarities of benefits and challenges between the cities we already represent. No two cities are alike, and what works in one city does not work in another city because their personalities are different. But as I looked at it, some of the things that I looked at was your overall budget is about forty-five million dollars, roughly. Your millage rate is a very reasonable millage rate, it's five point nine nine seven percent. There are cities that would trade millage rates with you in a heartbeat. To some of your citizens, that may seem expensive, but I think it's a reasonable millage rate. Your population growth here in the last ten years is about eighteen point eight percent. Your property values in the last ten years have grown twenty-two percent in the city of Mount Dora. Your debt is not unreasonable. You have two types of debt. You have your general fund, you've got two bond issues totaling about five million dollars. And in your enterprise fund, your utilities, you've got about fourteen million dollars. Those were your most recent bond issues, one was in twenty fourteen. So in looking at that, and I'm trying to be honest with you about what we were looking at. In the last several years, you've had annexations, as I reviewed the minutes. You've had development plan approvals. That, together with population growth and rising property values, demonstrates to me that people in this area look at Mount Dora as a good place to live, work, and play. Those are your pluses, I think. Your challenges are mostly monetary. And you're not alone there. Other cities throughout Florida and really America have been challenged, particularly with the Great Recession. It looks like, according to your staff data that I looked at, that your staff believes that you need about fifty million dollars worth of capital improvements in the next five years. That's a big chunk of money. Some of that may be a wish list, but I suspect there is some of that that really needs to be done in order to preserve the quality of life here. One of the things that I saw that I think is a challenge for Mount Dora, but you're not alone there either, it seems your personnel cost and your health insurance are rising and it's putting pressure on your budget. And you need to provide new infrastructure to facilitate growth, to expand your tax base, and at the same time, preserve the quality of life that brings people here to begin with. Sanford has addressed some of those issues and really every city to some extent. But Sanford has an older downtown like Mount Dora. Sanford has a developing area where new growth is going, which is out by the mall that we talked about. And one of Sanford's issues has been, how do you marry those two things together? They're both part of the city. You can't spend all of your money downtown to make it a pretty place to be when that by itself doesn't expand the tax base and provide some opportunities to grow. And you can't spend it all out around the mall and let the downtown fall down. Your big growth area is for forty-one. There's quite a bit that's starting to go out that way. I draw a parallel to that in the area around the mall in Sanford. Sanford has used CRA in an effective way, but CRAs by themselves are not the whole answer. I looked at your CRA and although there is some revenue there, it's probably not going to be sufficient revenue to do a great amount of things. And you've still got a district that you have to be concerned about. But some other things that Sanford has done to try to leverage that, they have acquired about four acres of property in the downtown area. They put out requests for qualifications for groups who were potentially interested in a public-private partnership to potentially come into the city and in partnership with the city, develop a catalyst site, a site that wouldn't completely redo the downtown, but would take a part of it and potentially provide residential element to that, a retail element to that, and some office space and be like a catalyst or a demonstration site that would help lead to more development in some of the opportunities that there are downtown. The city has entered into a memorandum of understanding with someone they've selected to do that. In about six months, if all of the studies that the private party is doing come to fruition, which we believe they will, we expect the city and the private party to enter into a joint development agreement to try to leverage that. That's one thing that they've done. When I was sitting across the hall, my phone buzzed and I looked at it and I had a message from the city manager of Sanford. And he said the economic development ordinance that was on today's ballot passed two to one. What that is going to do for Sanford is to enable the city to have another tool in its arsenal to potentially provide some tax incentives for businesses who want to expand either physically, to build a bigger plant or a bigger building, or to expand jobs. And if they meet certain criteria, the city will obey part of the taxes for up to ten years as an incentive for that development. So that's another tool that the city is using. And those types of things, I'm not saying all of those would fit for you, but the experience we've had working with the cities that we do, we see different things and we can talk to you about them, introduce you to them, let you decide whether you want to pursue something like that, tell you the people to get in touch with and give you the experience of others, and kind of leverage what we do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what is your track record of avoiding litigation and at the same time helping cities avoid legal costs? And then conversely, what is your track record of successful litigation and how quickly were these issues settled?
Let me go with that first. One of the, well first, let me go back to the first question you asked me, then we get. I have a belief that, you know, you need to have a three Rs. You need to provide your client resources, you need to develop a relationship, and that will produce results. Okay, we've got the resources and we got the legal abilities. We need to have a relationship with the client, one of trust. And I want to go back to that first question you asked. And that, and I didn't, and trying to build a relationship, I didn't answer that question as well as I would have liked to. But let me tell you a story that will answer that question well. When I first arrived at Fort Bragg, North Carolina, I was asked to write an opinion about whether the commanding general could give soldiers an extra three months of school time off if they re-enlisted. The army said you could do three, General Warner wanted to do three more. And I wrote a great legal opinion. And I was called across the hall, across the street, to visit Colonel Warner with the Staff Judge Advocate. And Colonel, excuse me, General Vonley Warner. And General Warner called me over and said, "Captain, this is a great legal opinion. And you're probably right, but we're not gonna do it that way." And that was okay. You let the policymaker make the policy. And you don't, and I read you hundreds of ordinances, hundreds of pieces of legislation, hundreds of contracts, which got nowhere. And they were written well, they served the client, and if the client doesn't want to use them, that's fine. So that doesn't bother me not having our product used as long as the client is served, okay? Now, to go to your question, one of the major focuses of my representation is to ensure that clients stay out of needless, needless litigation. that clients stay out of needless litigation. That means you write good contracts, you write good ordinances, you provide sound legal advice, and you have a relationship, those are again, a relationship such that your client will ask you questions and you can give them an honest answer and they know it's an honest answer. And yet, you can hear the needs of the client and maybe say, "Here are some options, other ways you can do it that you won't be sued." And when I first became city attorney at Lake Helen, I had numerous lawsuits and they were unnecessary lawsuits. Straightened the city out and it wasn't sued for years and years and years. And I think we've had a good run at Sanford and Oviedo. And so, there's very simple ways to keep out of litigation and that's make sound legal judgments after you get sound legal advice, make sound decisions after you get sound legal advice. Now, success in litigation, I'll turn that over to Mr. Colbert.
I was just going to add to that. One of the things that all of my clients hear me say, because I say it pretty often, is, and it's not rocket science, it's pretty simple. I would rather keep my clients out of trouble than to dig them out. And how do you keep the clients out of trouble? Well, you build a relationship, a relationship of trust, and you work collaboratively. We don't sit on Mount Olympus and issue edicts. We work collaboratively with staff, we work collaboratively with the council, we try to dot the i's and cross the t's and do things in a logical way. Because, one, many times we can avoid litigation. But, two, if we have to litigate, I want to go to court and look like Superman, I don't want to go to court and look like Barney Fife. And the difference is the bullets, you know, Barney had one bullet. Superman has an arsenal. That arsenal is the collaborative effort and the input from the various ways and dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And when you go to court and you've done that, it's really hard because you're a city and you're entitled to a presumption of correctness. If you've done a really good job of that, it's hard to overturn a city's decision. When we do go to court, we have a pretty good track record. There is a case called Seminole County versus City of Sanford. The Supreme Court of Florida decided that case. It's an annexation case. It's an old case, it's over 20 years old. It's still the law of annexation. The city of Sanford wanted to annex property and it was out toward what is now the mall. The county considered that their territory and they did not want the city to annex property. The property owner requested annexation and it made sense to the property owner and it made sense to the city. And so, the city annexed it over the objections to the county and the county sued. We won in the circuit court, the county didn't like it. We won in the Fifth District Court of Appeal and the county didn't like it. They appealed it to the Supreme Court and now it's the law of Florida. So, if we hadn't done our homework, we might not have won that. But since we did, we made good law and we protected our client. The lawsuits that we've actually had to try are not great in number compared with the litigation we've been able to avoid or the problems we've been able to solve or in the few times that people are choosing sides, mediation a lot of times will work. And all of those things, in my opinion, unless you're just dealing with somebody who is irrational or being a bully, all of those things are preferable because they save time, they save tax dollars, and they bring about a goodwill if you can settle something. When you go to court, there's a winner and a loser and those things are not necessarily good in the long run.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We kind of reached the end here for, you know, we were trying to set a little time limit before tie. And I do want to ask you, if the board allow me, and I'll continue with you again. And I just want to ask one, just one quick question. And it's got to do with, you know, the land development codes, things like that. How do you work in dealing with the appeals? Because that's usually the most, one of the big contentious areas that cities deal in, is the different suits that we have and different things, appeals and of our codes and...
Appeals to the courts or internal administration?
Internal administration, you know, the different companies not agreeing with our land use codes and appeal our decisions that we make and we end up in some kind of a litigation process with it.
Well, the best defense against appeals, which once again, whenever you're in court, there's a tremendous amount of potential waste because you're going to have to spend a lot of legal resources to defend. The best defense is a well-written code, an ambiguous code, because an ambiguous code will get you in trouble. A code that is consistent with your comp plan and so there's no ambiguity so that a property owner can't say, "Well, the compensee plan says X and the land development code says Y. I want X to run today," which would be the law. So, unambiguous codes and ordinances will, first of all, avoid a lot of litigation. Second of all, making a good record at the local government level, which starts with good staff reports and helping your council ask the right questions, make the right documents appear of record, make the right statements appear of record, make an order that can, like Mr. Colbert said, that you can take to a court and say, "This is why the decision was made." I can't tell you how many times in the past, the years passed, before we started having our cities and county governments enter development orders that stated the facts as to why an action was taken, an approval or denied, a denial, how hard it was to explain to a court why a decision was made, but all you had was a transcript with five or seven people saying individualized statements. And then you tried to tell the court, "Well, here's the reason," but that wasn't a clear statement. So, you defend by having a good clear order, a development order that states findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a decision. A denial development order that states findings of fact, conclusions of law as to why a denial occurred and a reason and order. That's the way you defend best in the courts. And there's similar principles that relate to internal appeals, like, you know, from your various boards up to here or wherever. Because you get an appeal from a board, I haven't studied quite frankly, what boards would, all the boards that would appeal to you, but you get an appeal from a board and you don't have anything but some minutes, with some statements and a vote, that doesn't help you much in terms of the rationale. And I know you don't want your board members testifying in front of you. So, once again, a good record, a good record is so important.
Thank you very much.
If I could just add...
Go ahead.
On that for just a moment. One of the things that we find most helpful to our councils is the staff memo, the memo that the city staff creates that provides the background, it provides what the financial impact of this is one way or the other, it provides what the issues are, and it provides a staff recommendation. For all of our cities, we ask that there be a legal comments section and we write the legal comment section. And we don't recommend, from a legal perspective, that you approve or deny this, but in the legal comment section, we will say what the legal issues are. And if you choose to support this, this is what you need to find. And if you choose to not support this, this is what you need to find not to support it. And we don't say what you should do, but we give you some information that when you make that decision, at least we have bullets in our gun if we have to go across the street. And once a decision is made, if it's a land use thing, we ask that you make the decision and then instruct the attorney's office to prepare an order for you to sign. And then we have an order that has the elements in it that we believe best sustain whatever the majority decision of the city is. Is that helpful to you?
Very helpful. All right. We're going one question. Can, is it pressing or...
I'd like to hear it.
All right. Okay. Just, Greg.
Be the last one.
The last one.
Mr. Groot, you're a counsel to the firm and you're the only board-certified attorney in the firm, as I read your resume. Who has the malpractice insurance? Do you have your own malpractice insurance? What's the amount? No, that's the question basically. And the amount of that and do you each have malpractice insurance? And if you do, what are the, that raises some potential conflicts and...
Me to answer?
Yeah, I have a contract with the firm and I'll let Mr. Colbert explain it.
I'm the managing partner and so I deal with the insurance issues and all. The firm has a $2 million policy. That includes all of the attorneys who practice with the firm, whether they are shareholders or of council. And we have been with the same firm, the same malpractice carrier for about seven or eight years. They keep, they like us, we like them, and they haven't had claims they've had to pay and they like that and our rates are reasonable and we like that.
Thank you. That's all I have. Great. Okay, with that, I want to thank you, Phil, for being here tonight and taking your time to share your expertise with us.
Thank you very much. We thank you for JAG experience.
I think you have it right.
Been in many generals' offices, need for a JAG one. I certainly sympathize.
We thank you for having us here. We've enjoyed being here. We have done our homework. We would like to represent you. And if you choose to nominate us to be city attorneys, we promise prompt, efficient service, and we would like to be with you for the long haul.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the evening.
I'm getting older.
I might need another cup of coffee.